Paul.
I was Randy Snead.
Erica Burton.
Sean Harley.
George Knoll.
Angela Resendez.
Derek Jones.
And Lori is taking the place of Lisa. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's okay, I'll just address that.
Yes.
Go ahead. Guys, on the agenda, you're gonna see something that says we have a public hearing for a colonial corporal zoning. I'm not sure why that's on the agenda. I know that Lisa is out this week, at least for the last couple of days. But we've addressed this issue. We passed an ordinance. It was 2021-11. We passed that at the last meeting on September 15th. It's in a minute. There's no requirement, no need for a public hearing, so I just think that's an error on the agenda. And I didn't get a chance, obviously, to talk to Lisa because she was gone when I saw that. I called and she was not available. But I don't think we have any public hearings concerning the rezoning. That's already been taken care of, done, over with.
Thank you. Minutes of 8:18, 21, regular session.
Motion to pass in minutes of 8:18, 21, regular session.
Second.
There's a motion as second to pass in minutes for 8:18, 21, regular session. Is there any additions or corrections? Excuse me, that should be 9:18.
Yeah. 9:18, 21.
Yeah, 9:15.
9:15.
Okay, is your motion to... Okay, we got a motion as second, the correction of 9:15, 21?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens' input. Pat Burgett.
Hey, how are you? There are a few questions. And I wonder, I've never been to one of your board meetings. I'm not a resident. I have been a part of the community for over 20 years in the business. I'm having a tough time now, and it's not about an easy time in the restaurant business. And it seems like we went from a friendly, artist community that supported farmers and, you know, people that work on their own and everything for a long time. And at the present time, there is no place for a farmer to park a semi, a stock trailer with a truck, a landscaper with a trailer, unless they want to walk for two bucks. And, you know, especially sometimes in the morning, like between 6:00 and 8:00, when there's really nothing going on downtown. I just, I know that there's city ordinance citizens, city ordinance services and everything, but I think that we forget that we're a farming community. And we're just, we're here because of a lot of farmers. They've supported this community for a long time. And I just, I'm just looking for a little leniency on some of these parking regulations. And George and I talked about it a lot of weeks ago. And we came to a conclusion that during construction there wouldn't be any tickets written. But I still don't think that we're addressing where can we park some of these people in this rural community. It's not like we're a big city or anything like that. We're a farming community. And I haven't seen that. I'd like to have some discussion on that sometime. I also would like to be up to date on ADA compliance. And right now, the two handicap spots in front of my building represent nothing because they do not comply with anything. They have two steps to get up on the sidewalk, which you're not supposed to have any. And if you want to go behind your vehicle in the lane of traffic, you can do that, you know, if you're in a wheelchair or, you know, there's just some things that could happen. And I don't know whether that's county, state, who controls all of that. And so I, I'd like to have somebody look into that because that concerns me a little bit. And then, because I know that we're doing things all over town, so this may be something we could work into and make everything correct, you know, first time through. And then the third thing that I want to talk about is looking at your plan. And I know it's already written, stolen, and everything signed and everything. But I've asked the question, if we're going to put different parking on the west side of that right now, why can't we, until this project is done, go ahead and put some angle parking there instead of two long parking, to gain a few more spots? And I've looked, the curbs all line up, so, you know, I know they're gonna take the sidewalk back a little bit. But right now, the curbs all line up with what's across the street in front of the restaurants. And I'm just looking for, for me, the program, any business downtown. On a Friday night, it's a zoo out there. And we just, I'm just looking for any place I can to park. You know, and right now, we've got stuff tore up back here, and the bank really doesn't want parking back there. I mean, this, it's kind of a problem. And so I was thinking we could get at least, you know, six or several more spots rather than just two, you know, while the construction's going on until it gets done. I mean, I don't know what, I don't have a sequence on how they're doing the construction. Are they gonna finish the parking out over here? And if they are, are they gonna do the sidewalk at the same time? Because if you take the sidewalk back, that means that there isn't a sidewalk for anybody to walk on, come down that side of the street, or park. So, just feel my concerns. And I just, I'm just asking you guys to try to look at it from my shoes. And, you know, 60% of my customer base are over 65 years of age. If you go into a restaurant on a Friday night, you're gonna see more walkers and scooters and stuff to walk around. They depend on, a lot of people in the community depend on me at least twice a day. You know, on Friday nights, it's like, you know, I get a lot of different people from out of town. I draw from Mission Walk South, and Warsaw, Culver, I mean, all over. And if we gain, if we do what we're supposed to be doing, I'm helping bring people to town, and we need to start new businesses downtown, parking's gonna be even a worse issue then. So I think we have to have a little vision and figure out what we can do for parking in the future. Because we can't grow the downtown if we don't have a place to park.
Okay, can I try to enter? With the ADA compliant, obviously, that is state property.
Okay, so are you sure the state for that?
That's state, is Michigan Street is state from American to Railroad Tracks, and obviously State Road 10 going through town. The side streets now are on us for ADA. The parking issue is a pain right now. I don't think anybody here is gonna disagree with it. Plan for the parking area and the downtown area, we know a start date, we know a finish date. We don't know how the contractor is going to, what section are gonna do first, what section are gonna do last. We don't know any of that. As far as the future, we will end up with, where you're talking, two straight parkings, we'll end up with nine parking spots there instead of two. So down the road in the future, there will be more parking.
That could be six months away.
It could be.
I mean, I'm just saying, in the interim, I mean, I would be happy to pay somebody to come put the stripes in.
But there's no way that we can allow nine parking spots there if they're going to be doing construction there.
There's two there now.
Well, and those will be blocked out too.
Yes, I say those.
I talked to him earlier today, so I talked to the engineer.
Okay, Mark.
So once they get into this, they're ripping this whole sidewalk out. All this will be replaced. So they're gonna block along the roadway, so you won't even be able to park there. Because they'll have that all blocked out, especially when they put this here. So I can't tell you when, so those parking spots that are there, until they fence that off, by all means. I was up there earlier tonight, and they were across even the drives. And I don't think, Cory, I don't see an issue with that.
No, I don't see it.
Since they're, I know it's not a parking spot, but I don't see where we're up there writing tickets, so.
We haven't been.
They could probably get four or five cars in there now. And after that, I don't really have an answer. I mean, this is gonna take, they tell me three months at the max. So we're hoping by 1st of December, middle of December, it'll at least be open. So, go ahead, Cory.
So as far as enforcement of the parking downtown, if you look at the last month, I think, I've talked to Mark about this, I've talked to you, there's only been a couple tickets, I think it was last month, none of those had to do with parking for Pat's business. None of them. I think there was two. They were wrote for violations that were 3:00 in the morning. I'm sure nobody's eating at Pat's restaurant at 3:00 in the morning. Number two, this list month, there's a couple tickets wrote. I wrote those tickets. I stand by those tickets, and I would do it again because it was, it was a hazard. They were rose hazardous. Someone would have pulled out a Smith, or you have the pictures. I mean, it was a total hazard. I had a complaint tonight of a truck parked in the inner, towards the end of the intersection that was a hazard. If a semi would have come around through there.
They're double, double yells.
It would cause, you know, it was in the way. As far as leniency, we have been doing that. So I will continue to keep doing what I have been doing.
Let me ask you a question. Pat, what time do you open in the morning?
Well, our business officially opens at 6:00. But we have farmers that have keys to my business that go in at 4:30, 4 o'clock.
That's kind, I think we're running into a little bit of a controversy there, in my opinion. I'm willing to enter a motion to adjust the legal parking times up there. Can't have this or that. Yeah, I mean, I was willing to go to 5:30 versus the 6:00. I was thinking you opened at 5:30, but I was mistaken. But you can't.
That's what I'm talking.
You cannot, you can't just have whatever time. We gotta have a time. Because these guys can't be said, well, do I write a ticket for it, do I don't write a ticket for it? And obviously, we can't allow semis double parked. And I've lived in this town my whole life, my whole life. And I have never seen semis parked in downtown Argus. I've never seen cattle trailers parked in downtown Argus. I've never seen John Deere 4020s and double gravity wagons parked in downtown Argus. It just never has happened. I grant it that people took advantage of having that empty lot over there. I get it. That was still private property. If somebody had got her over there, there could have been some major liability issues on somebody's part. That's part of the reason the town's got blocked off, because we own it now. But I'm just trying to state the obvious here. It's a small town. There's not a lot of room up there. I mean, to put an 80-foot-long semi up there, I mean, anybody can see what happened the other morning. It was just, I mean, I was running out of my lane to get around from somebody coming northbound. So, I'll be honest, I'm the one that called Cory and told him to go look at it.
Well, I wasn't there that morning. I can't tell you what that was like. But I'm, it's just, it just, I just think that we need to look at parking in general.
I won't disagree with that. But we can't expect to put a truck stop parking lot out here.
Right, right. I understand that. But right now, if I'm going to park it, I'm in front of the park. And, you know.
So Pat, there's been vehicles double parked eating. We have a road, and they've been on down, like, I'm talking like a pickup truck with a fifth-wheel trailer. I haven't messed with those. I've only messed with the two semis that were messed with, wrote a ticket because it was a hazard. The one semi was on the roadway, had his hazard lights on. The other one I wrote, it's been a while back, it was over the summer, it was a pickup truck with a livestock trailer who wasn't double parked. He was taking up about eight or nine spaces. One of them was a handicap space on the end of the parking lot. I stand by those. I'll continue to do it.
Those are, anything?
No one has messed with anybody, the timeframes, no one's even wrote a ticket for anything past like 4:00, and it wasn't, it had nothing to do with your business. That was.
That's not what I'm hearing. That's, that's.
Well, I mean, when your, when your customers are yelling at me for walking up to a semi, I mean, apparently, they don't, they don't know what's going on.
Well, I, there, it just has, seems to just gather fuel as it keeps going and going.
I wonder where that's coming from.
Not from me.
I don't know. And why am I getting attacked by customers verbally?
They talked about it all day.
I'm just saying.
We're getting out of, I guess, we understand there's a problem with parking. And yes, you and I talked about that. And like I said, I don't tell the police department what to do. We're gonna back Cory with this, like we said. It's up to Cory. If it's unsafe, granted, they've been very lenient in the whole town with the $2 parking and that during this.
Very much so.
So duly appreciate your concerns, and they are a concern. And we're, we're trying to work on it, obviously, to get more parking spots. And even when this was done, in the back, you can see, there'll be more, there'll be a long spots on the east side that you're, you can get a couple pickup trucks with trailers in there. Now, granted, semis aren't gonna be able to park in there, but.
I was thinking the same thing, George. I was looking at that.
So yes, in the future, you're gonna gain some spots there.
I mean, that's only a couple, I mean, that's not very far from your door.
Right.
I mean, I could see trucks and livestock trailers on that east side there. You know, I could see that. But yeah, I don't, I don't, I agree with George. I don't see semis being out parked.
Now, I see the big parking lot out there. What if somebody parked across lines on the big parking lot early in the morning?
You mean from here?
Yeah, on the west side.
On the south side.
I don't think they're gonna get in there and get out.
They'll stop back.
Semi.
No, I'm not talking about semi. I'm just talking about trucks and trailers. Because there's a lot of times, like in forage time, when I do weigh-ins and stuff like that, that they stop in for breakfast and this and that. And, you know, are we gonna get in trouble with something like that?
I can't speak for the police officers on that.
I would say I would rather see them pull on the alleyway where those other spots are, to park along there.
No, I think it may be along that east edge. Pardon me here, Pat. I think along that east edge, is there a possibility that, I know that's kind of earmarked, and Guy got other things earmarked too, but there's nothing really dead sense. It's a variable thing.
It's gonna be open.
Can we, can we kind of like maybe draw a couple of, I'm thinking like, when you go to a boat ramp, you got extended parking spots, like for a truck and a trailer?
That's what's gonna be over there.
Okay. Where you have extended length of spots.
Okay. Well, George, this is a thought. So Jamie did go down there, and so south of 10, they covered all of the no parking signs.
Right.
So we allowed, we took away the parking hours till this is finished.
Why, how, how did that happen?
Hold on. How did it happen? He went down and put things over top of the signs.
Who authorized that?
There was miscommunication between Jamie, the police department. He called me and says, what do you think? I said, I don't have a problem with it during construction, but it never got related to Cory by Jamie. So.
Well, I think that should have been a decision brought before this board to make, since that is by ordinance and no parking. Shouldn't any one of us be making a decision like that on our own?
Didn't make a decision. I told him I didn't care. I didn't say do it. It's a big difference.
It's implied.
Well, what I was gonna say, Sean, give me just a second here. Since we've already did this, or somebody already did this, I shouldn't say we, since it's already, that's been done. They didn't go north. Could we take and cover up those no parking signs?
They didn't go north, and the bags are gone.
No, he told, I asked Jamie, he said.
They were there last week, or they go?
Nope. They went southwards.
There was bags on the south. There was no bags on north. I thought I saw them on the north end. So that, could we take it off on the north side, so in the morning, those guys can park there?
He hasn't enforced it anyway.
No, I know he hasn't, but it just, it makes it easier on him. There is no bags on the north. Okay. Right. If I say, can't, can't, can't we get them covered, so that, I'm just asking.
Sure you can. That's up to you guys. But.
No one's, no one's really, I mean, the people that park there for, during those timeframes is mainly the people who live in the apartments above the restaurants and those buildings.
I go to work at 5:30 in the morning, and I see a substantial amount of cars at the restaurant, okay? So I go, I get that. And I was like, I said, I was willing to change the time to maybe 5:30, but.
I was gonna say, like you said, there has been one ticket written up there.
Yeah.
During construction, with bag goes out of bag.
I can't remember a ticket that was written at 5:30 for anybody to be parked in the restaurant.
I have not seen, nothing's been said that I mean about that, other than what time. That was it. It's pretty easy to tell whether there are people in the restaurant or not. Well, I think everybody in this room's in agreement on parking during the construction other than unsafe. I mean, that's what Cory's been doing now.
Can't park the street.
Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. He's done what he's supposed to do.
Or off to the very edge of an intersection with an 18-wheeler.
Can't park in a yellow zone.
So if you guys want to say, abandon the parking down, the parking ordinance downtown till after construction, that's totally up to you guys.
I'll make a motion to abandon the parking ordinance, restricting parking from 3:00 to 6:00 in the morning for the duration of the downtown park construction, with the exception of anybody parked unsafe next to an intersection or in a yellow zone, still subject to being ticketed.
Before I second that, very kind, look on your face, did you have something?
I mean, you can't say downtown. What in the world does that mean? You gotta define what streets, when, where, and.
You gotta say like between.
Smith and Williams.
Walnut Street and Smith Street and.
Would it be just easier to do away with, I'm sorry, Randy, just to do away with the time limit? I mean, the 6, 8, and 3. We're really not doing, it's not really an issue. It hasn't been an issue.
I'll amend my motion to state between William Street and, what street is it? Smith Street.
Smith and Williams, First and Maple.
First and Maple.
Is it just the time? The timeframe?
And, no excuses, no illegal parking, no yellow parking, no intersection parking.
Just the 3 to 6, A and.
Just the diagonal parking.
The 3 to 6 parking. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to not enforce the timed parking, limited parking between Smith Street and William Street, and First Street and Maple Street on Michigan or State Road 10 during construction. Correct? And a second.
With the exception of the safety.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Pat. I'm just trying to. And just for the record, Pat has donated many, many, many items to many, many people, food items to the fire department, and is very active for, like you said, years in the community. So he's not just coming in here to complain. He's here legitimately, I'm telling you, so.
I've known Pat many, many years, and his son is my best friend. So, I mean, I get it. I know there's an issue, and just try and find a happy medium that we can get through. Yeah, I have a couple.
All right. Any other citizens' input? Jan, you're probably gonna get beat up on this one now. You shouldn't have went first.
A little bit. Okay, I've written something out, so I wanna read it.
Okay.
I'm old, and I don't want to forget it.
Okay.
And it concerns the cemetery.
Okay.
You know, we have all these beautiful parks. They're always mowed, look excellent. But I think our cemetery represents our town, the whole soul. You have many of your people who built this town buried out there. It looks, it looks awful. But I know the guy that was sick. He had COVID. But I think maybe the town should have a little compassion and help him out. We have the lawn mower. We could have went out there on the weekends and helped him out. Not saying go out there and mow all day. Go out home maybe for a couple hours. Help him out. Also, we could have put on the Facebook, asked for volunteers to go out with the weed eaters and blowers, and do that part for him, because it is a big job. And the old part is awful, to keep mowed. I understand that. But when somebody's hired to do that, they need to know what their job consists of. You know, they can't blow this grass all over the stones. That's, to me, that's unnecessary. And I know it's hard. But they need to know that they can't, it should not be done that way. And it can be done. So I wanna know why there's no cemetery board.
We are the cemetery board, right?
You do? I was told there isn't any.
Nope. The town council is a cemetery board.
Oh, the town council is? Okay. And what money's allocated for the cemetery?
We have a budget.
I know you got the budget.
Cemetery, adopted budget, $17,600. And the tax levy's $3,000.
$17,000 budget.
For this year. $17,000 and $3,000. Right at $20,000.
And that's for?
Upkeep. Pretty much, pretty much all that goes to mowing. And then, of course, you have your perpetual care, which is in there for headstone repair and those kind of things also.
Okay. When do you advertise that?
It has been advertised, and tonight it gets passed on the third, second, third reading. It was passed on.
No, no, I mean, when do you advertise the job for some, for more?
We have a three-year contract, so when it comes up in that three years, it's advertised.
And when does that come out?
I'd have to look. I don't remember off the top of my head. I think there's one more year.
And I think we've discussed this, that if it wasn't the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, but that we may well be advertising for a new cemetery mowing contract. So I think there's a, I think the current contractor doesn't want to continue with the contract. So that's probably something we're gonna have to address here to address 2022.
Because I know somebody that'd be interested in it, so I'd like to let them know.
But they can always put in, and we will have it on record. Then when it comes bedtime, we would know to, we could always contact whoever.
Okay.
I mean, that's just a courtesy thing.
But they really need to, yeah, pay attention to the notice, give the bids back, okay? And it's all part of the meetings that we have here, so it won't be anything secret.
I don't get here often. I haven't been.
And there is a contract that specifically states when they mow, what they're, how they're supposed to do it. And up until this year, with this, with this man getting sick, it's been immaculate, I guess, up till this year. This year, he got sick with COVID.
They still blew the grass on the stones. Yeah. But they did weed eat, and yeah.
And he was always very meticulous about not going out there when it was wet and blowing it on the stones and making it ugly. And, I mean, we've also tried, if you remember years past, to do it ourselves. And literally took two people 40 hours a week to keep it up.
It's a big job. Yes, it is.
To keep it up. And it was, it was more cost-effective to bid it out than it was for us to try to maintain and hire people to do it at that time.
But in a pinch, they could. In a pinch, they could.
In a pinch, they could. And can I say it was probably an oversight on our part? Obviously, yes.
We actually looked at doing it, and we had nobody to spare. We had two large projects going on, and we had nobody to put out there. We actually did go out, Jamie and I went out, and we looked at it. And we said, if it's not done, if it's not at least mowed on Monday, we will try to get everybody around with all of our mowers and get out there. But we also had a large project and a large water project week going on. We were trying to take care of, and it would have been later in the week before we could have got to it. And he did have it mowed that weekend. So one, he got a part-time guy to come in and mow it.
Did we have anybody in town ask to do community service? That'd be, you know.
Not in this town.
No way.
Not in this town? Okay.
Pretty big cut.
That'd be a good, big deal for them.
Believe me, Jan, I've been here on this board right now. This is my 15th year. And you have that same handful. It does 99.9% of the work in there burnt out.
People, you have single people sitting on.
And you got this percentage over here that wanna sit home on Facebook and bitch that don't wanna do anything but that. So if you wanna be that percentage, don't come in here complaining.
That's a good point.
And you're not complaining. I love you to death. And you guys both come in here with valid points. I wish I'd have thought of what you just said, and it would have been cleaned out. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Where were you at two months ago? Come on. Where were you at two months ago? Come on.
Derek is correct. We, we discussed this two meetings ago about the cemetery contracts.
I would expect it to see that coming up at some point, maybe not next meeting, but I mean, before, obviously, next two weeks.
I'll let the gentleman tell, let him say it.
Good.
And it's local, so.
Anyone else? You were done, right?
I'm done.
Okay. But thank you.
Why Pat's still here? Pat, I also wanted to add something that, um, it's awful dark here in the morning in front of your place. And I have asked Jamie to brighten up the corners there because I've almost had people crossing in front of me in the morning. I've almost hit them, but I didn't see them. It's really dark there. So I just want to let you know that I have asked Jamie to look into, and that might be part of this bigger project here, making that corner a little brighter.
We're getting new streetlights.
But I did want to let you know that. I mean, it's not that we don't know that you're there. We do care about your business.
I just, you know, I've got a, I've got a whole bunch of customers and I gotta look at them, say, hey, I did my best and. Tell them Wednesday nights, first and third Wednesdays at seven thirty. Tell them the same thing that we just told you.
I mean, I've heard everything.
But their, you know, their safety is just as important to me as their parking is getting across that street. So I wanted you to know that, that I have asked for rider intersection.
We also like pie.
Okay. Attorney report. I'd like to say I don't have a lot, but do a few things we've got to kind of tackle and address tonight, guys. First thing is the situation. We've got ongoing litigation at three twenty-six West Church Street with Mr. Mora. If you remember, we had let that out for bids one time. We got no bids. And we let it out for bids another time. I think it was back in September. Bid was published, or the, the bid specs were published September the second. And it looks like we now have one bid. So I'm gonna open that bid. And it says that it was received September twenty-seventh. Bids were due October the fourth, which was Monday. So the bid is timely. It's from Color Construction Incorporated.
Fool born every day. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate you coming in.
And it is, it's a bid from Color Construction Incorporated. It basically comply with the order from the court. They have submitted a bid for fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Dean, you're here tonight, you're the bidder. What, uh, anything else to say? Nothing to say?
No, I just had concerns when I called. I talked to Derek a little bit. Um, I can tell they've tried to clean some of the stuff up, but there's a lot of, there's like a blue awning. I don't know, it's, is that supposed to be removed? I haven't gotten really any information because if that comes down, then whatever's inside of it, I'm sure is gonna have to go somewhere. And I haven't got any clear direction on where that's, what all I have to get rid of. That's why I think I have been there that during the time that we do it, an officer needs to be present. Um, not only for our safety, because people live there, but to kind of let us know what all needs to go. It's pretty vague in the, in the terms of the, the case.
And he's right. To be honest, it is. And I'll be honest, you know, we don't know what's under the blue tarp, okay? I mean, it could be a pile of marijuana, who knows? Um, but we simply don't know what's involved with getting all this stuff done. But we do know that there's plenty of stuff left to be done pursuant to the court's order. There's vehicles, I think, that are supposed to be, if they're impounded, they're simply supposed to be removed from the property. Um, so it's, I, I understand. If you're a contractor, you really don't know exactly what all you're getting into out there. And I think not only law enforcement, but I think somebody from the council ought to probably be there to help kind of guide and indicate what they think is a violation of town ordinances. Because that's what the order says, if it's looking to comply with the ordinances. Yes, I think Cory can do a fair job with that, but I think also that there, I think it would not be out of line to have somebody from the council there as well to directly kind of discuss things as you encounter them.
I'd volunteer to do that.
Okay?
That'd be very much appreciated.
I would also, but we're far away.
I'd volunteer to do that. Is, is there a, do we have some kind of a scope or exactly what we're supposed to do?
Of course, I have taken a stand picture.
I've got photographs. And that's about what there is.
The ones that we, that were presented to the court?
Right there. Yes. And I mean, you can see there, there's a big blue tarp front and center. There's another tarp that's in the front of the house. And there's, I see more tars and there's a dune buggy. Um, there's, I'll call it trash in the front yard. There's trees that are basically on the house or next to the house.
Tree on top of that blue tarp.
And again, I think that some of this stuff has been addressed possibly, but to what extent, I don't know. It could've been worse than when these photographs were taken back in March of this year. Yeah, it could be worse. It could be better. Um, but the order from the court says bringing it into compliance with the town code of ordinances.
Well, I'm also aware there's a lot of feral cats there. Are we responsible for just.
We're not messing with, we're not messing with cats.
Okay.
Hopefully, clean it up somewhere. Cats are, unfortunately dispersed out there.
Okay, there's only one bid. One bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Color Construction to clean up the, I do not know the address of the property on Church Street, but that is the case. Three twenty-six Church Street.
Is there a second?
What second?
There's a motion and a second to accept the bid from Color Construction to clean up on Church Street. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do that email, or you leave. I'll give you my phone number and you just call me. I was down in West U. Court, so.
Sounds good. I'll be in contact with Cory. I'll get, I'll get that scheduled.
Okay.
Maybe one of we can come in there and do it.
All right.
You have to get that big tree up top of that tarp first, and that one. It's a mess. Next, Derek.
Next. All right. This is a fun one. The town has been identified and basically it's real estate that the town owns, which we'll kind of talk about again here in a little bit. It's basically the police station. That real estate has been tagged with a, it's called a common law lien, okay? And it was filed by the House of Graver. A gentleman by the name of Paul Albert Graver filed this lien and he not a thirty-one million and some odd thousand dollars. It's hard to read because I just, pretty much I was copying. But nevertheless, he's filed a lien against town property, which, between everybody here in the room, it's an invalid lien, okay? But when the recorder in our county or any county is, is confronted with this, along with the paperwork, uh, complies with they, with what they have to, have to accept, they've got to make the recording. So it shows up, any judgment and title search that would be run on this property would show, well, there's a lien, thirty-one million, some odd thousand dollars. So the question is, what do we do with it? And again, it's a totally bogus lien, all right? The documentation, uh, stems from an incident where I think a Argus police officer arrested Mr. Graver because of an outstanding warrant here in Marshall County, took him to jail. And he spent, I don't know what period of time in jail, but he did. And he also filed a lien against the county and the county jail. And so they're dealing with that also, and I'll get to that in a minute. But at the end of the day, he's placed a lien on these two properties. And he's alleged that in his court, um, it's called the Private Administrative Court of the House of Graver, well, by golly, he has a judgment, okay, for thirty-one million dollars. So he's filed a lien based on that judgment. And it's nothing more than just his own made-up fabricated assessment of what he thinks, uh, would be appropriate damages for, he calls it kidnapping, um, a bunch of other nonsense. Um, but he's got all that in this lien. I know that, uh, I sent you guys an email yesterday. The county's aware of this too. And the county intends to basically contest the lien. It's through what we would call a quiet title action, okay? Which basically means we would file suit in court against Mr. Graver and the House of Graver, whoever else we need to, uh, stating that this is an invalid, uh, bogus lien. And get a judgment that in essence extinguishes the liens. And hopefully would allow us for a judgment, a legitimate judgment, to have attorney fees recovered. Now, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but I'll just tell you that when you're, when you're dealing with somebody like this, you gotta remember you're dealing with somebody like this, okay? So at the end of the day, it is something that probably should be addressed. I sent you guys an email that I got from Jim Clevenger, who's the county attorney. I sent that just yesterday. I just got it yesterday. Um, this is all just kind of coming to light because it just happened last week. But he's of a mind, or basically the county's of a mind to go ahead and initiate suit to extinguish this lien. It's my recommendation that we join in that, in essence, work with the county and we can kind of probably consolidate some time and expense on that and, and move this forward. Just for a little bit of side note, you'll see in my email, this happened to our county prosecutor about two years ago. And he had to go through this process as well. And he was successful, of course, in, in having that lien extinguished and getting a judgment in his favor. But again, once you get that judgment, you have to make that decision, well, what do we do with it? And again, we'll cross that bridge down the road. But I will warn you that based on the history of Mr. Graver here, that it could well be that myself or that any council member may wind up with some kind of a lien on their personal property, email, or not personal property, I'm sorry, real property, email, do it again. I don't know. We can't control that. We can't stop that. But we can basically say we're not gonna put up with it, okay? So that's where this is at. It's one of those, one of those things, you just kind of shake your head and say, we've got to deal with this. Uh, we've got to do the best we can with it, but I do think that we need to address it. And it does, it may, I should say, affect what's going on with the NDOT purchase of the very small parcel. We're gonna pick that up next, but it may have some ramifications there too, okay? But at the end of the day, it's my recommendation that we do, uh, kind of join with the county and contest this lien and not let this stay.
That's an informing of the motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, and I understand where you're coming from, Derek. And all of it, but if he comes after us individually, like you're saying, in our real property, who would defend, would the town defend us at that point? Would you be defending us in that cases to do the same thing or?
In your official capacity as a town council member, I would, I would tell the council that, yes, it should be the responsibility of the town to basically pursue that and extinguish that lien if something like that would develop as well. The, the hope here is eventually Mr. Graver may get the picture that you can't just go around doing this. And if push comes to shove, he's already got one judgment against him that is a valid lien. He may well wind up with another with this, but if there's enough of those, we can move to do things like foreclose on houses and sell property and things like that. In other words, make life kind of rough for him. Those are pretty extreme measures and we don't, we don't have to go that far. But if he meets fire with fire, then we may have to take those steps. But I would just say, see what comes and see what develops. Um, but yes, it would be my interpretation that if any one of you, uh, as town council members have, wind up with a lien because you're on Argus Town Council and you voted to do this, then I would say we're in the same boat. And yeah, do the same, take the same steps. But I think we may have to get a little more serious at that point.
Well, I'll make a motion to our, Derek, to, to join in with, uh, Mr. Cliff Clevenger and the Marshall County, who's the Marshall County lawyer, and, uh, what do you want to say this? Work on, uh, getting this lien removed from the House of Graver against EMS building.
No motion and a second to partner up with the county on this court case. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One more, just, just a bit of clarification. There was an individual police officer name on the lien, but I do not believe that his real estate was identified in the lien itself.
No, and I have checked at the, the Fulton County, at the recorder's office and myself, nor Rodney has been. At that time, I need to keep checking, I guess. This is the same guy, if you remember, I talked about the insurance claim.
Oh, yeah.
But no, not, not at this moment, I don't think so.
And, and that's something to consider. I really haven't, but you're right, that we did talk about, or you and I talked about.
You read, read the notice on that.
Insurance. And, and yeah, I'm happy to do it, but it's just.
The town.
It's a, and it's, it's.
I would hope someone would.
The town, that really the town shouldn't be responsible for it. I think at the end of the day, yeah, we'll get a judgment at least for the attorney fees. But what do you do with it? That's, again, steps down the road. But I, I think it may be worth having a discussion, for me to have a discussion with the liability carrier for the town to see if there's any. It's called, they have a duty to defend, okay? So in other words, if, if a police officer truly did do something wrong and got sued, we have liability insurance to cover that. Well, there's an allegation that a police officer did something wrong by serving an arrest warrant. And is that duty to defend extend to that? And I, again, I think that's worth looking at. This may take a long time to get resolved. But I, I do think that I ought to have that discussion with the liability carrier, probably Clevenger as well, to see if he thinks there's any coverage on the county's part, to see if, again, I, I don't want to incur this short expense on the part of the town. And so if we can kick it to a liability carrier and say, you guys messed with this guy, I'm happy to do it. But I'm also, I don't have any problem moving forward with the county, uh, if that's what we need to do. Something you say?
Derek, if I, if I can, the insurance company called me, they denied his claim on the basis that he had no right to file it because the House of Graver was filing it for someone else.
Sure. And I get that, but then again, I, I guess it's one of the situations, we don't want to just sit around with a lien.
No, absolutely not. I wouldn't want to know my property.
So it's okay with the council. Again, I'll, I'll kind of look into those avenues as well. I'll report back to you when I get more information, but I'm clear that right now the motion that.
I feel that's part of that motion, that you're just gonna do what you guys do.
Add that joke a little more.
We will, we will take care of it one way or another. The last thing that I have is concerning that very same piece of real estate that there is now a lien against, um, an invalid lien, but there is. And that's concerning, we talked last time about the purchase from NDOT. We made a, a motion to approve their offer to pay a thousand dollars. They're getting, uh, twenty point one five square feet. So we're talking about a very, very small piece of real estate. And I, I wish Mr. Burke were still here, but they are putting in an ADA compliant sidewalk grant. So maybe that's a sign of things for the future, that they're progressing with that or doing more with that. But at any rate, I do have a resolution. If the resolution is passed, it basically, it's proving that offer to sell the real estate for a thousand dollars to NDOT. Um, it's also authorizing George to execute any and all other necessary documentation to effectuate that transfer. But again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step back just a little bit. And if you remember, we talked about that we've got an issue there with that property that is technically owned by the Argus Emergency Services Building Corporation. And so I've also prepared a deed to convey it from that entity back to the town. I've also prepared an affidavit that I'll let you take a look at in a little bit. But it basically explains that they're basically an entity or a department or an agency of the town, and they were when it was created. That, that entity was administratively dissolved back in two thousand and three, I think it was. Hold on, I'll give you a really good date. Dissolved in ninety-three. I'm sorry, it's still ninety. Twenty some odd years ago it was dissolved. And they still own that real estate in, in title. So what we're gonna try to do first is convey the real estate back to the town. Once that's occurred, then we have additional documentation here that will convey just that. that small piece of real estate, and the easement to NDOT, for them to be able to put in that ADA compliant grant. So the resolution gives the approval to that transaction, it also gives the authority for George to sign documents necessary to effectuate not only the transfer, but that conveyance to NDOT. It's resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten. I don't think that that's probably in your pack-up, I just talked to Lori about that today, and it was my fault, I did not get that to anybody ahead of the day. If you guys wanna take a look at it, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash ten. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash ten.
There's a motion to pass Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash ten. Have you guys got any discussion down there, are we reading?
No, we're reading.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Might as well just sign it all here.
Mr. President?
Chuck?
While we're talking about that property over there, the police station, we had a VZA meeting last night, and what came out of that is they passed the variance for the setbacks, but one of the stipulations was to put those five parcels together, police station and five parcels, all in one, and then over on the other side where the Quonset hut is, there's four parcels there, and the resolution there was to pass the variance with all four of those parcels being combined. So, I would think you probably need the attorney to do that.
Did you catch all of that, Derek?
Parts of that. And I understand there's a variance, but is there a resolution or an ordinance, I should say, that we would need to grant or adopt that?
They passed the variance last night, and we don't, we haven't put it into the minutes or anything like that, but that's what it was based on, was to go ahead and have those five parcels put together, the police station and the four parcels put together at the Quonset hut.
No accounting function?
No. No, the property belongs to us. What we need to do is combine those four parcels and five parcels.
Which means, how do we combine them?
With the legal description.
Total meets and bounds around?
Yes.
Okay, where, we need a survey for that?
No, you don't need a survey for that.
Survey is already done.
And, and you can, and I can do that as the town administrator, I can sign off on that, on the combination. If it's a split, splitting a parcel, it has to go before the plan commission, but on a combination, I can sign off on that.
I don't, I don't know why that would, no matter one way or the other, be a bad thing to do necessarily. I will say, though, that you understand that right now, we've got that, the police station, there's two locks there, there's really nothing in the name of Argus yet.
Right, I know.
We may run into some pushback with the way this deed's fashioned, and our affidavit that we're gonna sign, they may not like that, but we'll find out within the next couple of weeks.
Well, I would say, you know, once that's done, then the next step is combine those, and then combine the ones on the other side. Because we can't build across property lines.
Right.
And so we've gotta get those out of there.
Setback issues and, yeah.
We've gotta get that out of there, so we can do our new construction.
I don't hear a problem with what he's proposing.
You may make more clean cut when you build your own house, I mean, just use one parcel instead of trying to track five different ones down.
You ever had to slide back out again, and comes back in front of the, the plan commission, so.
With all this, we have two parcels, the building's on now. We're dealing with the deed with that. Now we have a claim, we get, I don't even get to, does that jeopardize anything at this? Do you want to combine all those until all this is done?
If I had any concern about that lien being valid, then that may be a different issue. And even so, the, the lien itself has the legal meets and bounds description, and it's only those two lots. And, again, to be honest, the, the lien is against the, both town of Argus, but again, right now, title's held in the name of the Argus Emergency Building, or Argus Emergency Services Building Corporation, so it's, it's invalid on so many different levels that it's just ridiculous. I don't, I don't have any concern about that.
How's that process work? Do you just rewrite the legal description, and then record it to the county, or your daughter has to do it, or?
I, I do think there does need to be a meets and bounds description of the entire parcel, that somebody said, we have that.
They, the surveyors have come down and surveyed it, and they have the legal description. I actually think the county has it, all this information, Recorder's Office, but they can't do anything until-
Isn't that an application process there as well, that you just say, I wanna combine parcels?
Yeah, wanna combine them, I sign off on that, and then go get it recorded.
And so you kinda had to wait till last night, when they approved their part, before Chuck could sign off on his part, before it goes to the next part.
So we're not to a new legal description, in essence, it's not so much a new deed, but it's just a new legal description for five parcels that become one.
Correct. So is, is that something that your office then prepares the, the legal documents for, Derek? Do we need the title company to do that?
No, it sounded like the survey's been done, that provides the legal, it's called a meets and bounds, where it's basically, you travel one hundred and eighty-three feet this way, and you, and you turn zero point nine degrees this way, you know, it's, it's all that mumbo jungle, and when you look at it, you're like, I don't know what you're talking about. That's a legal description, and it's a silly name, because attorneys don't know what it means either, but that is providing basically the bearing, the compass bearings, and the feet of the boundaries of that property, and once that's been established through a survey, which apparently's already been done, then you know the outer boundary of those five parcels as compared to just one, or two, or however many. So once you've got that, then you're good to go to basically file the application to say, we wanna combine all five of these parcels into one. That's what Chuck is basically saying, that you can take care of that, it's just the application process, and then the county assessor would recognize five parcels now as just simply one parcel.
This is what they got through the surveyor, this gets to the police station, line here, across, back down, so that the beat one, and then this one here comes up.
So it's kinda broken up into the alley.
Yeah, there's alley, but there's a bridge, and that will be combined.
You're not gonna get one parcel, though, the alley.
No, not one, one parcel, but two parcels.
Two parcels.
Right, because we can't have a parcel that goes across now, across the road. So we'll have one for the police station, one for the Quonset property over there.
So we need a motion to let Derek go ahead and proceed with the legal documentation for the combination of the parcels.
Well, and again, I don't know there's much for me to do, it's really-
It's fine, but whatever, whatever you need to do with Chuck and the county to get it done.
So then?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not just a motion to allow Drake to work with Chuck and the county to get these parcels taken care of, for legal description, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the attorney's report, but-
It's all right, in place, though.
I thought it was important.
And I'm done, anyway, so. Making moves to accept attorney's report.
There's a motion and a second to accept attorney's report, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirteen, budget for twenty twenty-two, second and third reading. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, budget for twenty twenty-two, on the second and third reading.
Second, Pat.
There's a motion and a second, need further discussion. Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. It shouldn't says, I'm abstaining, because I can't vote. Sorry. Sign it, mark A, nay or abstain, please, the way you voted. And while you're doing that, Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash zero-nine, power tractor.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nine, carry tractor. Second it.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero-nine, power tractor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. She's saying all this, what we're talking about. She takes up the whole page, we're kicking her out.
Her name is like this big.
She doesn't have first two, she should write a word.
Stop! All y'all.
You know when school had them fake pencils like that, with the light about the size of your finger, she kept using them to look like a coloring book?
Not true, I colored in the ones. Thank you.
That's why your mark went all the way as you might.
That's true. Look.
Doc Ganji.
Give me enough space, I'll use it all.
All right. Here, she can have all those, I'll put her right in there. She can just put it there, and keep that whole orange. Okay, Laura, you're up, on the approach to time clock, yes?
Okay. Lisa had asked me to do some research on the new time clock program for the town employees of our territory and the police, and so what you've got is a summary, a couple of the people, the two best that we found to go through. We're less than fifty employees, so it's an entry-level program, which is kinda the cheapest money you can go through. We do have a filed data share, so we'll be able to upload directly into BSNA, which is our payroll truckler. That'll definitely take some pressure off of Candy, as far as what she needs to put in. Scheduling is included, it'll be a, an app on a phone, so they can punch in and out. Their, the company will geofence the location where we allow the punching in and out, and so when they come in, they punch in, they go to lunch, they punch out, they come back, they punch back in, and then they go home. We'll also be able to set up a, like a small laptop, a regular computer, for someone who doesn't wanna use their phone, and that saves us the cost of a time clock. So there's a significant saving there. There is a, an additional fee for the first, first year, as far as getting all this setup, they come in, do, take a look at all of our benefits, they'll track our vacation, holidays, sick, all that's on there. The employees will be able to access the app from anywhere, so if they wanna do time off requests, they can do them from their living room if they like, but they can only punch in and out within the geofenced area. So if they're wanting to put in a vacation day, or they get sick, they can apply that sick, that sends an alert to the supervisors, they're now going in to take a look and see if approved, not approved, which will also make it a little bit easier when we start tracking vacations, holidays, and it kinda puts a little bit more responsibility back on the employee to make sure everything's getting tracked, the way they would like to have it tracked, as it goes through. The company that has the best fit, and actually, both companies, Ascentis and Andrews, uses the same program, it's Nova Time, and Ascentis is actually Nova Time, is their program, and Andrews buys it from them and sells it, which is why we're getting a better price, so we're actually getting it directly from the manufacturer. There's a fifty-nine dollar setup fee for the first year, the program fee is twenty-three seventeen per year, so the first year, it'll be thirty-eight seventeen, and then twenty-three seventeen every year after that, unless we happen to go over fifty employees, in which case, we'll have to take a look at where we are. And then Lisa said that would be divided out between seven departments, so each department would pick out seven of the cost. We're getting kinda close to the deadline, if you want a January one starting. We would need to have the contract signed and get ready, so they can start coming out and having meetings with us, and they would like to have at least two full payrolls, that we can do back-to-back payrolls at the same time, to make sure there aren't any issues with anyone's time or anyone's salary.
We're gonna be pretty close to that fifty. I'm sorry, with the fire territory.
Not with employees that clock in.
Right.
There's only be volunteer, there's only be tracker volunteers, this will be all just-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Part-time and-
Scratch it out.
Yeah.
Lisa asked me to speak on this just a little bit, this is, some of us up here use this software, although it's a different company. I got, bit, I was skeptical at first when they introduced it, it's my work, but it's pretty nice, pretty handy, it works pretty reliably. I go in, I schedule my vacations, it's really nice, you can go around, you can look at the schedule, see who's off, who's winning, so when you're planning. I know it made our HR department a lot more efficient with updating, you know, when you take a vacation, and it seemed like it was taking forever to, so you knew how many hours you had left after that. It, it sped all of that up. These companies, I wasn't familiar with the names, so I had, I'd quiz Lisa a little bit on them, and these are corporations, Paylocity or the other one, but the reason that they are with this one is, this particular one has a direct connection to BSNA through that file upload, which is very valuable. So, with that being said, I'd make a motion to approve the Ascentis quote for first-year fee of thirty-eight seventeen, and the annual cost after implementation of twenty-three seventeen.
I second that motion.
First, I'm coming first. There's a motion and a second to accept the Ascentis-
Time.
And, Ed, one question, will this, say Doug has X amount of days vacation, will this be, when they go to go into it, because I run into this problem with the limo, I have X amount of vacation days, but I can't put them all in for the whole year, because it's based on hours. Is that the way this is, you get what I'm saying?
They can set it up so that we, either you front-load your vacation at the beginning of the year, or you crew it as you go. Currently, we front-load everything at the beginning of the year, so then they'd be able to see that. What it also does is it shows what you've taken versus what's been approved.
Right.
So even if you haven't taken it yet, it won't, it'll give you an, an error if you try to take more than what you're owed to report.
Right. That's, that's the way ours works, that's why I order it, that's the same base, so I can predict the same thing.
Yeah, totally.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I guess I should've said, there's a lot more than, than just time part of vacation on this.
A lot, yes.
I mean, it's, you could, I don't know if this is, but you can probably track your retirements and all that kinda stuff with the two, is that right?
Eventually, that's something that we would like to look at, but we're just using the basic one up front, just to see how, how it works out, yeah, you'll be able to do a lot of it.
Cars, we've got a handbook on there, our whole benefit package, our retirement, everything's all right up.
Okay, does anyone else have any other new business? Mark?
We ordered a table.
Oh, yeah.
March.
A table, table?
Big table, in March.
We ordered a new table.
Maybe over there, probably.
So. We didn't get that far. We'll let you pick those.
Chuck, do you have anything, since you're here?
Don't think so, we did the approval last night at the plan commission meeting on the, what do we call that, Mark?
Deerfield move.
Yeah, we approved the preliminary class for the Deerfield move.
So we've got that started, and we're gonna grab Derek before he leaves, so we got our next steps in process.
You guys got anything back there, Department head, since you're here? Okay. Claims, September 11th, 2021 through October 4th, 2021. Sean is, he's, he's already there, so he's clear.
They gotta get Turner right away first.
I had to do that, too.
Don't. Docket for 10/6/2021, total check register is $411,273.14. Payroll number 19 for $46,975.47. Payroll number 20 for $48,672.09, for total docket of $506,920.70.
Any questions for Secretary Sean here?
Yeah, right.
Any questions on the claims docket? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody make a motion?
No. I made that motion.
See, I was worried I was gonna get, worried by correcting me, but they caught it themselves. Eric can make some motions in a second.
Sean's the second.
Any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's Wednesday, you know what that means.
Wrestling, Sean.
Sean made the motion.
It's Wednesday, you know what that means, guys.